I'm Dr. Jack Miller and I'm a teaching assistant professor at Portland State University in political science. I specialize in American politics and political theory. I also study political reform and political reform movements and electoral systems, which is specifically what we're talking about here tonight. With me is my son, Zane Emerson. He's a political science major at Lewis and Clark College. He's a junior. He's also a member of the speech and debate team. And this term happens to be part of, he's doing research with a group at Lewis and Clark that is studying this election. He spent a lot of time learning about ranked choice voting and the reasons for it and its benefits. I'm going to explain the system that Portland is going to be using this November. And then I'm going to go through a little sample to show you what it might look like, to sort of show what goes on under the hood of the counting and the deciding of the winners. Zane's going to go through the reasons why we're having this reform and some of the benefits that typically accrue to this type of system. So I'm going to push Zane off to the side now. And he'll be back to do his portion of the thing. Before we get started with the explanation, I want to give you a chance to participate in a ranked choice voting ballot. So how does it work? Well, if you either scan that with your phone, or I'm putting in the chat the link to the same thing, please go to this election and vote. And you get to pick top six preferences for what you think makes the best day out in Portland. This is obviously not candidates, but it's the same type of election that we're going to have. So go ahead and scan or click and go to this link and put your preferences in. You are allowed to vote for up to six, but you don't have to. You can fill in your top two, or you can fill in your top four.
I wonder what's the matter.
Whatever it happens to be. But let's see, Darlene, you're not muted, by the way. So go and do that. While we're giving people a chance to vote, because I want to make sure that as many people as possible can take the time, I'm just going to say a few things to fill the time. One of which is that this system that we have that's being put into place here in Portland this fall is not entirely unique. There are systems like it in other places in the world, but it's relatively rare. It's very cutting edge. It's quite innovative. Portland was an innovator in city government 120 years ago. We were one of the first cities to adopt what at the time was a cutting-edge innovative experimental system of government, which is the commission system which we are currently living under and are replacing. Portland and Oregon in general were leaders in progressive electoral reform. We're a little behind this time.
Hey, Jack, I hate to interrupt, but the ranked choice vote link in the chat doesn't seem to be working appropriately.
All right, let me go back to the chat and make sure. Oh, that's the results. Oh, sorry, I put, sorry about that. I gave you the results and what I should have given you was vote.
Thank you, Cheryl McDowell.
Ah, thank you.
I thought it was my own ineptness.
No, let's get that. This is, you know, and I tested this out earlier, but then I tested it with the wrong, with the wrong link. Okay, is that working now for people?
Better, yes.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So now I have to continue my filler. So Portland was a leader 120 years ago. We're kind of a follower now. This reform makes us a leader again. I've been hearing from people two reactions to this change. One is excitement that we are actually now again on the cutting edge of political reform and that people are looking to Portland to see what our new system looks like as maybe a leader in innovative ways to make sure city government works better. There's also a lot of concern and potentially even fear that it's going to be messy and chaotic and confusing.
You know, I've lost it now.
We will know soon which of these two is going to be the result. I think it's probably going to be a mixture of both. It's going to be still a little confusing to people, but it's also going to be quite exciting. But just know that if you're feeling excited by this because we're doing something big and innovative and interesting, yes, great. If you're feeling a little confused or concerned or even afraid that it's going to, we have a city that has a lot of problems and this is going to make things worse instead of better, I think there's also a lot of justification for feeling that way. Okay, I'm going to now go to the results.
Has everybody finished?
These, I can, I can update these. We have 12 votes so far. If people need another couple minutes.
If you came in late, we're voting from the app in the chat. The second, second link in the chat, we're voting.
All right, cool. So we've got votes. Does anybody need any more time? Should be a couple more votes. Okay, it's, I can swing back to this to see if some late coming votes are in. But here's, here's what the results look like. Here's the first round. We see only first preference votes. So PALS got six first preference votes. Art Museum got two. Farmers Market got two. So Picknick on Sibley Island got one. Dragon Boat on the Willamette got one. The others got no first round votes. Now, the way this election works, because I'm actually, I'm going to go back to this. We're looking for the top three choices. Now, if we were looking for the top one choice, the winner winner, things would look a little different. But we're looking for the top three choices, which means that you need four of 12 votes to win. The way this works is that when you have three choices winning, you divide the 100% by n plus one. Three plus one is four, and that's your threshold. Now, if that's confusing to you right now, I'll explain that again with a, with a slide that actually breaks that down. But the vote.
Should we be seeing results?
Is four of 12.
Should we be, should we be seeing results on our screen?
You should be seeing results on my screen.
Okay, we don't see results on our screen.
Yeah, you have to then click, after you vote, you have to then click additionally to go through. I'm going to go back and do this again. Make sure I have the updated results. Right, we now have 13 votes in. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to proceed. PALS now has seven. I'm going to click through. On the first round, PALS has seven. Now, that's enough to win. And so you can see how it's green, but we need two more winners. So I'm going to go to the next round. What happens is PALS surplus votes are redistributed. Portland Art Museum got one. Chinese Garden got one and Rose Garden got one. So they now enter. Next, we have round four, where we redistribute votes from the losers and Farmers Market is coming up. Now Portland Art Museum has got enough votes to win. And now Farmers Market has enough votes to win. So after six rounds of redistributing, we have three top choices. PALS Books, Portland Art Museum, Farmers Market. Now, I want to go back. I'm going to do an example that breaks this down again. If this still seems confusing, notice that after round one, Farmers Market isn't even on there. PALS, Portland Art Museum is, has two votes and PALS overwhelms. Part of what can happen with one of these top three type systems is that candidates, or in this case, choices that didn't have any first pick choices can rise up to become winners, largely because they're embedded usually in the big winner here with PALS. Now, if that's confusing to you, which it potentially is, you've now had the experience of actually voting, seeing what the outcome was, looking at the phases of counting that sort of showed a little bit of a race. And then you're like, okay, now I don't know how this works. Well, you're in the right place. And hopefully, by the end of this, you will understand what you don't understand or only vaguely understand in this particular moment. I'm going to save time for questions after my presentation before Zane comes back on to explain the advantages of the system. So if you do have things that you're not sure of, keep them in your brain. And as soon as I'm done, I'll say, hey, do you have questions? Please ask them. Okay, the mechanics of the system are ranked choice voting, which is also known as single transpareable vote. In general, the way this works is that voters rank candidates in order of preference. You've done it already. That's the easy part. That's the part that I think makes the most sense. We rank things all the time, right? What's your favorite type of restaurant? Is it Italian? Is it Thai? Is it Japanese? You have a preference, right? We all have lots of preferences. Currently, we only get to, in regular voting systems, single candidate balloting. We only get to pick one, which might not even be our top preference. It might be the lesser of the evils that we choose. Ranked choice voting, it makes a lot of intuitive sense in that sense that you rank your preferences. You, in different elections, you have a number of different places that you can set to. In Portland, the, the number is six. As with this contest that I just had you guys go through, you don't have to fill out all six. If there's only two things you like, you only put two things in. If you have three or four, you only put those in. You do not have to complete all six rankings. Write-ins are available and you can rank, you can write in a name and you can rank it first, you can rank it second. It would be strange, I think, to write in something and not have it be your top preference, but write-ins are available at all levels. Counting is done where if a single, if a candidate reaches the required threshold and the first preference they went outright. PALS had more than enough to be one of the top three. So it won outright without any redistributing whatsoever. If no candidate reaches the threshold or if there are multiple winners, as there are with the top three vote in, in the election that we just did, there, there are instant redistributions of votes until there are winner, enough winners determined. And the votes are instantly redistributed according to a specific set of rules. Now, what that specific set of rules is depends on the kind of election that it is. We have two separate rates, types of races happening in the city of Portland. One is single-person offices. The mayor and the auditor are both single-person offices. And in that case, the majority is needed to win, which is 50% plus one. That's what a majority is, 50% plus one. So the rules for doing a ranked choice voting election for a single-person office is really straightforward. If a single candidate receives over 50% of the first preference votes, they went outright. And they're the clear choice of the people. If not, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated and their ballots are instantly redistributed to each of the voters' second preferences. And so if, for example, we're thinking about a presidential election and your favorite person is Jill Stein, because you really want to vote for the Green Party, you put Jill Stein first. And then if your second favorite is Kamala Harris, you put Kamala Harris second. You are not throwing away your vote because if Jill Stein doesn't come in, that, if, let's say there's only three, there's Stein, Trump and Harris. If Stein doesn't come in, in the top two, your vote automatically goes to your second preference. So you're not wasting your vote in the sense that like, oh, but I, I would prefer Harris to Trump, but I really do like Stein the most. If Harris gets 50% plus one, then your vote didn't contribute to that. But clearly, that's an okay result for you because she was your second preference. Vote redistribution repeats until someone crosses the 50% threshold. If there's three candidates, that will be one round of automatic redistribution at the most. If there are six candidates or eight candidates, which is going to be more common for different kinds of elections, we currently, I think for mayor, have seven declared candidates, though it's possible that that's dropped by one or two. I think some people may be dropping out. It could take more of these instant runoffs to get the candidate. But it's very straightforward. Whoever's in last place, they get knocked out and their next preference ballot goes into, into effect until somebody crosses the threshold. It gets more complicated when we have multi-member districts where we are declaring more than one winner, but the same underlying dynamic actually obtains. We have a threshold which is different when we have multi-member districts. It is decided by 100% divided by n plus one, n being the number of seats available. The way to think about why this works is that if we're, if we have three seats, we want to get the people who have the three most, the highest vote totals. The reason why it's n plus one divided by, 100 divided by n plus one is that if we divide 100 into 25% chunks and we require the threshold plus one vote, as soon as you give one extra vote to each of those 25%, then the fourth portion falls below. It'll be 24.99%. So you can't have four winners. That's the underlying mathematical reasoning. If that's a little confusing to you, then maybe you can just take it sort of on faith that the math lines up. I like to do that explanation just because some people's minds are mathematically oriented and they want to actually understand the underlying reasoning for it. All you really need to know is that in Portland, we are going to have four multi-member districts, as you can see on the map. The city has been divided into, into four districts, each roughly the same size. Each of them will get three city council members for a city council total of 12. Instead of having 12 separate elections, we're going to have four separate elections with three winners per, which means that the candidates need to get 25% plus one vote to win a seat. Now, the rules are similar but slightly different for a multi-member district than they are for a single seat like mayor or auditor. If a candidate reaches the required threshold on first preferences, they win outright. And since there's still two more seats to fill, their surplus votes are redistributed proportionally to what their second preferences looked like. And this might be a little vague to you, but I have an example that will hopefully show exactly what that means. And then if no candidate reaches the threshold, then we go on to doing the eliminating the lowest candidate and redistributing their votes until there are three candidates who have 25% plus one. Now, I would normally stop and take questions at this point, but I think that a lot of your questions and maybe even just utter confusions can be cleared up with a very concrete example. So that's what I'm going to do right now. Thanks for hanging in with me, by the way. I, I know that maybe this is a little bit of a, of a brain buster on a Monday evening. So appreciate that you're, that you're all here. Here are six candidates. Now, there are going to be way more than six in all four of the districts, this particular election. I picked six just because it fit neatly on my screen because voters get up to six preferences and because it, this will be complicated enough. The underlying example will hold whether there's eight or 10 or 12 candidates. Okay, so here's our six candidates. They've all declared. There are 100 votes. Here are the first preference totals. Purple has 17. Teal has 12. Brown has 18. Red has 36. Blue has seven and green has 12. We clearly only have one winner. That's the red candidate. And the red candidate has cleared the required threshold by 10 votes, right? There's, you need 25% plus one, which is 26 votes. So there are 10 surplus votes that will get redistributed. And what that means is the second preference of all 36 of the red candidate's votes get taken into account and they are redistributed proportionally. I've shown you the, the second preference distribution. 36 votes, 18 of those people put the purple candidate as their second choice. That's 50%. Seven of those people put the brown candidate as their second choice. And 11 put the green candidate as their second choice. We redistribute 50% of the surplus votes. Not all the votes of the winner go, only the surplus, go to each of the candidates who, who, who had some percentage of second preference distributions. So we add five, 50% of 10 is five to purple candidate. We add two, 20% of 10 to the brown candidate. And we add three, 30% to the green candidate. And now what we see is purple has 22, still short. Teal still has 12. Brown has 20, still short. And green has 15. But we now have one candidate who is at the very bottom, the blue candidate. And what happens now is that that candidate is eliminated. Now, this candidate has seven votes and those seven votes need to be redistributed to the people who said, "Blue is my top choice." Okay, well, who's your second choice? Well, we can see here, and this is just my example, that four people who voted for blue first put purple second. One put teal second and two put brown second. And so what we now get is we get updated totals. 20, and purple has just reached the threshold. So purple is now also the winner. Brown has gotten closer, but brown has not reached the threshold yet. So we have to do yet one more redistribution. Teal now remains the lowest scoring candidate who's left. So teal is eliminated and those 13 votes are redistributed to their next preference vote. Now, I've given this example here sort of specifically to show what might happen, which is that the teal and the green, I chose similar colors, were candidates who were maybe very similar to each other. And people were like, ah, I'm not sure who I like better. But the cool thing about ranked choice voting is you don't have to make that choice of like, do I like teal better than green? Does teal have a chance to win? Does green have a chance to win? Those voters didn't have to make that tough prediction or tough strategic vote. They just had to say, okay, which one do I like first? And which one do I like second? And in a way, it, it balances out. 12 of the 13 people who voted for teal voted for green. Those 12 votes go to green and one purple, but purple's already a winner, so it doesn't matter. Luckily, that now gives us 27 for green, who has crossed the threshold. Green is now the winner. After one surplus vote redistribution and two eliminated voter redistributions, three rounds of redistribution, we have our winners. Now, this stuff all happens automatically in the computer, but it follows exactly the logic that I have laid out. Now, before I take questions, I want to go and look at what all went down sort of with a sky eye view of this. First preference red clearly is the big preference. And this is probably going to be pretty common in a lot of elections where somebody has name recognition. I don't want to make electoral predictions for the Portland City Council races, but Dan Ryan is a current city council member who's running, I believe, in District One. Am I correct? District One. Dan Ryan, because he won a citywide election already and because he's been a city council member for, for several years and because he has a fundraising network and a network of supporters and lawn signs, all this stuff, Dan Ryan is likely to be a person who crosses the threshold really easily. So our red candidate here is that person who either has name recognition or they're really popular. Maybe it's some television personality who runs for office and be like, oh yeah, I like that, that, that person who's on the nightly news and I see them and they're good. What ends up happening is that the second place first preference person, the brown candidate here, doesn't end up getting one of the three seats. And I think this is, this is, this won't necessarily happen, but it certainly is something that could. And I think that this might to some people seem wrong or unfair. So I constructed the example to follow that. But here's one of the things that I want to explain, like, why would that happen? Okay? The brown candidate is popular among a certain segment of voters. But as you can see, doesn't really end up getting a lot of second preference votes. The kind of candidate that might have popularity in a certain segment but not get a lot of second preference votes is potentially a single-issue candidate who has their little area or is a potentially very divisive, love him, hate him type candidate, is potentially a candidate who, likely a candidate who, when they were out there campaigning, attacked the other candidates in a, in the hope that bringing everyone else down would make them look better, but by doing so, alienated people who supported any of the other candidates. If you, if we go back, and I won't on the slide, but right now, but, but after the surplus vote distribution, the brown candidate only got two of the votes, 20% of the people who liked red. Yet the purple candidate got half and the green candidate got three, got 30%. Probably what happened was that the purple and the green candidates were campaigning in a way that would make them a decent second choice for people who liked the most popular candidate, the candidate with the most support. They tapped into sentiment that, okay, I like the red candidate, but also if, you know, if the red candidate loses or if the red candidate has more than enough votes, who, who else do I like? The three voters that got redistributed to green and the five that got redistributed to purple, they didn't get their top choice. Actually, they did because the red candidate won. They now actually get their second favorite choice. And in fact, you can see that purple and green both do go on to win, though not on the surplus vote distribution. But what the green and the purple are likely to be in terms of candidates is consensus-building candidates. People who are not going out and attacking. People who are speaking in a way that's like, hey, okay, that's not my favorite choice, but that's a reasonable candidate. I think that they have a, a good voice. As you can see in the first vote distribution after green, after blue is eliminated, blue is a kind of a classic niche-type candidate, which has a very small segment of supporters. Under normal voting rules, the blue voters would, they would get nothing, right? That's your Jill Stein voters. That's your, that's your Ralph Nader voters. That's your libertarian candidate voters. I forget the name of the libertarian candidate. The people who vote for somebody that they love, knowing that person's never going to win or they vote for them anyway, maybe because they don't understand the electoral system, that it means they're never going to win. But what's cool about that is when the blue candidate is eliminated, we see that purple, who has already got five extra votes from red second preferences, purple gets four votes out of those seven. So again, purple is likely to be a person who can appeal to a broader constituency, who went out and instead of attacking the blue candidate and said, "That person's crazy" or "They're wrecking things" or "They only have one issue" or "They have no experience." The purple candidate went out and reached out in some way, either intentionally or just kind of as a byproduct of their political personality, and was able to get a good chunk of the blue candidate's second preference voters enough to win the election. Notice that the brown candidate did get two more. And so maybe the brown candidate was similar enough to the blue candidate, probably, but was again, maybe divisive, maybe attacked the blue candidate, called, called them inexperienced, called them too extremist, called them whatever. And so maybe a lot of people who, who liked blue and who sort of might have liked the brown candidate's policy stances were turned off by that style of politicking and instead gave their vote to the purple candidate. And then I think I've already explained, so now we're down to five candidates. And the green and the teal are almost certainly, I've given them similar colors, but I, that also is meant to convey, they have a similar political personality. They have a similar set of issues. Maybe they're the environmental candidates because they're green. Maybe they're the ones who want to promote more money for green spaces and parks and rec. They want to promote sustainable development. In a normal election with one choice, you might be like, ugh, I want to vote for both of them, but which do I pick? And then you have to then try to figure out like, if I'm, who do, who am I wasting my vote on? If I vote for teal, who's slightly my more favorite? Am I going to be hurting the green candidate and vice versa? The great thing about this, and we saw this in the vote distribution, is that of the 13 votes that the teal candidate has, that 12 of those second preferences went to the green candidate, which is, I concocted that example on purpose, but I concocted it in a way that I think is very reasonable for the way that people's voting preferences tend to. So that the green candidate, and it's kind of a two, kind of a shame for the teal, because if the teal candidate had gotten more of those surplus votes, right? The teal candidate got zero surplus votes. The teal candidate only got one of the votes that, from the blue candidate that, that got eliminated, whereas the green candidate happened to do better on the surplus votes. If teal had been ahead instead of green and green was eliminated, it's likely that a lot of greens' second preferences were the teal. So teal could, would have won. So for that person, it's a bummer. For the teal slash green-oriented voters, this is good news because it means that their votes didn't cancel each other out. They got collectively one of the three winners. And so when you're, when you're a voter and don't have to think strategically and there's more than one candidate in the race who has a similar policy profile, a similar ideological lean, maybe similar type of personality or experience, they aren't automatically going to cancel out each other's support. It's likely that the brown candidate, who was second at the beginning and didn't win, is a divisive candidate who either. Is a divisive candidate who either didn't do enough to reach out to the supporters of other candidates. Or actually, you know, actively attacked the other candidates and therefore hurt themselves on the second preference. It's likely that that kind of candidate didn't maybe think through the kind of election that they were running. Didn't actually decide to go for second and third preference votes. Or that their political personality would put them in a place where that's not what they would do. They're incapable of not being extremist and ideological and attacking. Okay, that's my analysis of this example that I've cooked up. So there's two things that are happening here. Why did we get red, purple and green as our winners? And I hope that the redistribution showed you why we did. And then politically, why is it that in fact, the third and fifth place vote getters in the first preference ballot actually ended up being the winners and not the person who came in second in the first preference ballot? Okay, so this is my time now to open up to questions.
Uh, Jack.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this and welcome to all my Twiliger neighbors that I recruited. You know, I've been looking at this simulation you've got running and the results of it. And, you know, Powell starts out with seven and then these votes bounce down lower. And then they eventually come back up higher and you get your three winners. So I'm wondering, and I'm trying to get my head around this. Do the, do the people that voted for Powell's in effect have more influence? I don't know quite how to phrase it. Or is it just a mathematical add subtract and they didn't sort of control it?
Yeah, you know, I, one of the things about this, and Zane will get into this a little bit, so I, so I kind of want to not step on his toes too much. But one of the things about ranked choice voting is you don't need to think about whose toes you're stepping on. You don't need to worry about whether or not you're diluting your voting power. You don't need to think about whether or not voting for what's likely to be the most popular is wasting your particular vote. So the, you know, what was the one that came to the top? Chinese Garden?
Yeah.
Chinese Garden didn't have any votes at first, but if you think about it, Powell's and Chinese Garden are similar type of attraction. And so probably there's a lot of voters who are like, Powell's, yes, and Chinese Garden, pretty close. We end up getting what a lot of people want. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And so I want you to hang on to that question and concern though, because part of what Zane is gonna talk about is more deeply why it is that that's the case. And I don't wanna step on his toes and he will explain everything in a slightly different way than I have, which is one of the reasons why I have my brilliant son here to back me up. But keep that question in your mind if you still don't a hundred percent feel satisfied.
Okay.
Other, does anybody else have elaborating questions on what went on in terms of the vote counting or what it looked like, how it, how the mechanics of it went down?
I do.
Okay.
You're saying, okay, which of us?
Who's, who's I do?
Roberta.
Yes.
Go ahead, Roberta.
Okay, I have a question about the after surplus, the surplus vote distribution.
Yes.
Roberta, excuse me one second. If somebody is not muted and you have a background noise on, could you please mute?
Actually, I, I think that the echo is coming from me. I'm gonna mute while I listen and then hopefully that won't, everyone else can mute after I listen.
Okay, so question about the surplus vote distribution on the, the six candidate example that we just gave us. Red gets thirty-six votes in the first one, she surpasses the limit, so ten of the votes are surplus. Which ten?
You're talking?
Uh, I think, well, everybody else mute cuz I think it's not me creating the echo. Well, and raise your hand and Darlene can call on you if you want. But, okay, there, there is not a specific ten, right? It's just redistributed proportionally. And I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna go back to that place here. That it, it's proportional to the thirty-six votes overall. So purple gets five because that's fifty percent of the thirty-six. So it's not that there's a specific set of five people that are sent there. It's proportional to the surplus votes. Now.
So basically, let me just make sure I understand what you just said.
Yes.
So basically, it isn't like we have thirty-six ballots and I take ten of them and redistribute them. It's that we take all thirty-six and distribute them proportionally.
Correct. Yes, and that's, and Roberta, that's a great question. Because it does, it's like, well, which ten? And why do, why those ten versus a different ten? It's not any ten specifically, it's proportional. Now, that said, I want to point out that when we do eliminate somebody. There, all those seven votes, those are the seven that are being redistributed. And really, it's, in a way, it's, the same thing is happening, it's just second preferences proportionally are being sent forward. In this case, it's all seven. So the, I do believe that it's the surplus vote redistribution that probably is the most confusing to people. And I think, Roberta, you've, that's the perfect question. And hopefully, that, and I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep that question in my head. Because in future presentations, if people don't ask that question, I'm gonna ask it. So great job, Roberta, thanks. All right, anyone else? All right, we got a hand right here.
I guess that's me. And I just wanted to, it seemed to me, one of the tests of a voting system like the one we're looking at is what does it take to game the system? That is, if you were a crass candidate that only wanted to win at all costs. And you had this kind of system within which you had to run. What would you do in order to maximize your chances of winning?
Great, okay, and will you mute cuz I think you're the source of the echo, Tom? I'm, I'm gonna kick that question to Zane with a short answer, which is that there's, the only way you can game the system is actually by trying to be a candidate who doesn't alienate the supporters of other candidates. And I actually was at an event where somebody raised their hand, they were there to support a particular candidate, like, what can I do to make sure you win, right? And I think this is a very common question of politically aware people in the United States. Which is, I know that strategic voting is something that is important. Ranked choice voting, strategic voting is not important. And, and that's all I'm gonna say because Zane is gonna take you through the, I would say, the multiple reasons for that. And then, again, Tom, if at the end you're not fully, like, your question isn't fully answered. Ask that question of Zane again, because he will be able to tell you in different words than I have told you. But the cool thing about this is, it's, you know, brown candidate, what they could have done differently was not be so divisive or single issue or, you know, love him, hate him. Not all candidates have the ability to do that. What could the blue candidate have done? Well, the blue candidate could have maybe been more broadly appealing, but neither of these are gaming the system in the classic way. So I don't think there's a way to game the system. But you might not be yet convinced, and that's one of the reasons why we have the second part of this presentation. Is to give, have Zane give you kind of the overall view on how this system plays out in the broader world. I'm just trying to get you to understand the mechanics. So, before we move on to Zane, any more questions about the mechanics?
I have a question. I don't know if it's mechanics or, or will be part of Zane's presentation. But I've been told to only vote for three people, for the, the city council race, not six.
Now, it, why was that advice given to you? Let me ask you that question. How was that advice justified?
Something like, because you really only want three people to win anyway. And why are you voting for people that you don't want to, to win?
Yeah, now, it's, I will say this. As a voter, only rank people that you actually know anything about and feel comfortable that, saying, I'm going to, I want to put you in, in, in place. It, it, one of the things that could be problematic about twelve, fifteen candidates is that it might get exhausting to, to decide beyond three. There is however, no mechanical reason to, to not go beyond three. And in fact, there is a mechanical reason to go as far as you can. Is that if your vote gets redistributed to its third winner, to, to, excuse me, to your third preference. And then that person at that round, which would be at least the fourth round, is the lowest candidate and they're eliminated. You now no longer count towards anyone else's vote totals. Now, if, you know, and in theory, what that means is that you're ambivalent about all the rest of, let's say there's twelve candidates. You're ambivalent about the rest of the nine, and so you kind of don't, you know, it doesn't matter to you. And mathematically, you will be treated as essentially an ambivalent vote. If you don't, if you know, if there are six candidates you like and you have your top three that you really wanna win and then you have three more that you're like, yeah, you know, like, I, I would be cool with them, or they seem like, you know, I would wanna support them. Fill them in, because it's possible that your ballot will never get past the third preference. But if it does, then you want to express the fact that you're not ambivalent between the remaining nine. It might be tiring to fill out all six. And it will be interesting, one of the things I, as a political scientist, am curious about is to know the, the data on the average number of preferences filled out. I'm thinking it's going to be somewhere between two and a half and three and a half as the average. But who knows? Maybe it'll be higher, maybe people really will pick it out, or maybe it'll actually be one and a half. Because many people are still just gonna fill out one preference. If you only fill out your top preference, your vote is going to really fall off the ballot quickly. Cuz it's likely that there will be multiple, at least two or three redistributions, as in my example. But there's no real reason, other than voter exhaustion on your part, to not go all the way to the six. And there is a reason not to, which is, if you're not ambivalent among those other nine candidates, you wanna register your preference in case it's necessary. I think that was probably a longer explanation than it needed to be. Hopefully that got it across.
That's good, thanks.
Okay, all right, I wanna leave Zane his full share of forty-five minutes, rather than stealing from him as I've been doing his entire life. So here is my son, Zane.
All right, hey, everybody. So I'm just gonna be going over like the sort of reasons why one would adopt such a system, right? I think my father did a good explanation of how it works. I now wanna talk about why it works and why we are actually using this system. I mean, why it has significant benefits. So first, I'm gonna talk about why our current elections are not so good and not so well run, right? The current system where you elect one candidate and whoever has the most votes win. Why is that current system so bad? Well, I think the first reason is actually because of a lack of meaningful choices, right? I have a feeling that everybody in this Zoom meeting has felt pressure just to vote for the candidate with the best chance of winning, not the candidate you actually like, right? Or even worse, you're not actually voting for a candidate, you're merely voting against the candidate you dislike. I feel like many of us have felt this way, I certainly feel this way in plurality elections. But I think it's interesting to talk about why it occurs. And it occurs because of this thing that is called the spoiler effect. I think this little graphic here is really useful in explaining that. So when you have a plurality system, whoever merely has the most votes will win. But that doesn't mean they have majority. So let's say you have two candidates who are similar in ideology to each other, right? And let's imagine that, you know, one candidate would win the vote. You know, they would win the election if it was just the two of them. But then you have this third candidate enters the picture, you know, who is similar. And they kind of peel away, see on that graphic, peels away a couple votes. Now suddenly, the candidate that most voters dislike now wins the election, despite the fact that the majority of voters wouldn't have voted for them. And so I think either consciously or unconsciously, people recognize the spoiler effect. When you're voting for a candidate who you see as having no chance of winning. At best, you have no, like, you know, effect on the election. But at worst, you're actually making it more likely that the candidate you dislike the most will actually win because you're siphoning away votes from the person you dislike. And I have actually a really good example of this, I think, from the most recent mayoral election, which is gonna be, thank goodness, the last one under the old system. So I may remember this, I should remember it. So we had, in the final election, it was two candidates, it was Ted Wheeler and Sarah, Sarah Anarone, Anarone. And then there were, you could write in, cuz it was supposed to be a top-two system. However, Teresa Rayford's supporters and others were not happy with the top two. And so this is like the most write-in votes that a, that the Portland mayoral election received in years, maybe even ever, right? So you can see that Ted Wheeler won the election by way less than, than fifty percent of the vote. And indeed, the amount of write-in candidates was like, like more than, like about double, more than double by the actual margin that he won. And again, it's impossible to know how those write-in candidates, who they would have voted for. But it seems likely to me that enough of them would have preferred Sarah Anarone to hand the election to her. But instead, we voted, people vote for these candidates and they spoiled, quote unquote, the result for Ted Wheeler. So this is the big, a big problem, is that people feel they either have to vote for the lesser of two evils, or they do and they get burnt. Another big problem with our elections, which has also been exemplified by the earlier section, is there's a lack of broad support, right? When there's a bunch of, when there's only two candidates, someone's guaranteed to win a majority. But when you have a crowded election with many different candidates vying for position and the one with the most votes still continues to win, candidates are gonna have less than a majority. So rather than that candidate representing the whole electorate, they're only representing one tiny piece of the electorate. So just to show you another example, this is not as a local thing. This is from the District Three Democratic primary, the primary, the district that we are all, that most of us are all in presumably. And so Maxine Dexter, she won the election, but she also won the election with a minority of the vote. Which means that, again, more than half of Democratic primary voters in District Three voted for somebody else. So Maxine Dexter did not actually demonstrate the broad support as broad as she could. Now, would she have won under ranked choice voting system? Likely, yes, we can debate that. But the key point here, as with the Ted Wheeler example earlier, is that you don't actually have to win when, under a plurality system, you don't have to win with broad support, you can win with a narrow base of support. And this is actually especially true in primaries, but also as generous during the elections. If you just have, consolidate your base and make sure that base is bigger than anyone else, you can win. Another further problem with ranked choice, or with current elections, is a lack of representation. So before, we didn't just have city councilors, we had them elected at large. That is, they were elected across the entire city. Now, we can see, this little graphic kind of delightfully illustrates why is this so problematic? Because when you have to, you know, just win a majority of the whole city. By necessity, many communities are going to be unrepresented. I believe that most city councilors have been from West Portland, even Southwest Portland for this reason. A lot of those, they concentrate around there and candidates sort of towards East Portland haven't been successful. And what this means is that there is a lot of communities that are in Portland that deserve representation that do not get it. And so again, and this is a problem with any single winner system of a large area. Is that because you'll need, not even majority, just a plurality, so many communities don't get any voice. And then finally, another problem, which with campaigns right now, with elections, is nasty politics, right? And you may ask, well, how is this determined by the, by the electoral system that we have? Well, it's actually quite fascinating, I think, because I think it's no surprise the campaigns are getting very toxic, right, very extreme. I've been seeing a lot of those ads for like Janelle Bynum and by Chavis DeRemeur, like, they're pretty nasty, right? And we're seeing all these attack ads. The reason why is because in a plurality system, you just need to win the most votes. Meaning that a vote for, meaning that by attacking, you are sort of incentivized to attack your opponent, to lower their vote total and boost yours. Furthermore, as elections trend towards just two main candidates, which they do because people don't wanna go for the spoiler effect. You're incentivized to run. you're incentivized to run to the extremes, to consolidate your base and just make sure your base is bigger than everyone else, right? When a vote for your opponent is a wasted vote for you, you're going to want to make sure that nobody votes for your opponent. How are you going to do that? You're going to do that with negative advertisements. So quite fascinatingly, our electoral system has a direct impact, not only who gets elected, but how they get elected and how they conduct themselves in their campaign. So, you know, I've been a bit of a downer here with the explanations of why our elections aren't very good. But luckily, the system that we have now, the ranked choice voting system can solve all of these problems. And I hope that by, with my father explaining the mechanics of the system have sort of give you a tangible reason of why that would be. So first, the benefits of ranked choice voting first is clearly it gives more meaningful choices, right? When you know that your vote is going to see you hop around and going to go from, you know, it's not just going to disappear, right? You could actually vote for the candidate you actually like, knowing if that candidate doesn't do so well, your vote was not a waste. So you can feel free to choose your candidates exactly how you believe. You don't need to lie on the ballot. You can vote exactly who you vote for, who you like, and then those votes could be counted accordingly. And again, this is helped by the fact there is no spoiler effect. And this is huge because a spoiler effect is a big reason why our elections are the way they are, why they are these typically two-party system, why, why people feel their vote doesn't matter or why they feel they have to vote for the lesser two evils, right? In the ranked choice voting system, there's no spoiler effect. If your vote siphoned away from another candidate, eventually, likely, those votes will merely be redistributed to that candidate you still like. So you will never, in a ranked choice voting system, be helping someone you hate by voting for someone you truly love because your votes will slide down to those things, right? You're not going to help somebody dislike win. Also furthermore, every vote counts, right? In a plurality system, at most, like, you know, many ballots can be wasted, right? Given to a candidate who didn't win or didn't have a chance to win, right? If somebody wins an election by a, just a plurality, not a majority, a majority of votes in an election could be considered wasted, that is not contributing to the outcome. But with the ranked choice voting, it should be very clear from my father's explanation that every vote counts, right? No matter who you support, if you support a not so popular candidate, your votes, that candidate will be eliminated and your votes redistributed. If you support an extremely popular candidate, the surplus votes will then be redistributed to your other choices. So every single vote has a unique special power in a ranked choice voting election. Furthermore, ranked choice voting provides a better representation of the, of our system, right? Should be clear that for, you know, even for the single winner system, like for the mayor, it's going to open up, you know, different kinds of candidates who don't, who can run more easily and collect that broad support to allow them to win. And furthermore, multi-member districts are the best for representation, right? Rather than having single member districts where people might be cut out, right? We have multiple members, many different communities, even the same district can be represented by different members. And it's even been shown statistically that more women and more people of color tend to win in ranked choice voting systems. And so, and so that shows that, you know, it's not just lip service. Ranked choice voting really has the power to change who gets elected. And, you know, these multi-member districts only further that by allowing people to win when, even when they might have, you know, less, you know, they, they don't have like a total support across the entire district. And then finally, ranked choice voting actually ensures broad support. I've been teasing this for a while now, but you know, with the current, you know, the single member ranked choice voting system for the mayor, you are guaranteed to win by a majority of the voters. So say goodbye to the Ted Wheeler problem, right? We're going to have a candidate who majority of Portlanders can work. Furthermore, even in single transferable vote, the, the city council system, the winners are also going to have strong pluralities, right? Rather than a bunch of candidates splitting the vote all the way down the line, you have to gather second, third, maybe in fourth or fifth preference votes in order to gain a seat in the council. So therefore, you have to represent a strong group of people in that district who support you. You're not going to skate by just by clinging to your small, you know, base, you know, base of power. And I think, again, this is really important because our current elections clearly do not incentivize this. They incentivize people to, to strengthen their base, build their base and split the vote against them, right? Single transferable vote does the opposite. And also, of course, you know, it's fixed the other thing of reducing negativity. Again, this shows how electoral systems directly influence campaigning. When you know that your election is going to come down to second, third, fourth place votes, you are going to want to be nice to the other candidates. You're going to want to appear nice to the supporters of those candidates, right? When I'm completing my ballot and, you know, sort of ticking down the rankings, I'm not maybe going to be so inclined to rank Negative Nancy so highly because she was really mean to my candidate. But I might be, you know, um, you know, I might be more inclined to support, you know, Happy Harry, who was really buddy buddy and was really good during the campaign. And I'm like, oh yeah, like they were nice to my first place candidate. I'll rank them up higher. So you are always incentivized in ranked choice voting to build strong coalitions, to appeal to as many people as possible and to be nice to your fellow candidates because a vote for them could well be a vote for you. Um, and I think, you know, a father teases a little bit in his presentation, but this system is not some crazy new system that's been cooked up out of thin air. You know, ranked choice voting by itself is used in over 50 places across the United States. This little map here on the side shows you which states use it, like, you know, some states use it statewide, others only for localities, others for various other types of elections, but many, many jurisdictions use ranked choice voting. Furthermore, the specific kind of ranked choice voting that Portland's going to use has actually been used in Ireland since 1921. So Ireland, by electing their like national parliament, has had 100 years of evidence. And, you know, Ireland seems to be doing pretty great right now. So I think, you know, that's a good system right there. And then furthermore, surprisingly, when I did some research, I discovered that Cambridge, Massachusetts, which is, you know, a medium sized town over in Massachusetts, has had Portland's exact system since 1939, when they adapted it based on popular vote for the state charter or for the city charter. And so these systems have been used before and they have been proven to be effective over and over again. Multi-member districts have proven to be effective and ranked choice voting has certainly proved to be effective over and over.